Could somebody have more to approve the consent agenda?
I'm so moved.
All right, he has presented, indeed. How in favor? On to public comments and announcements. Call everybody's attention to the Birch Point Road informational meeting, which is going to be held Thursday, March 7th at 5:30. And we were saying last meeting that it would be here, but it has been moved to the Westbach Fire Station in the hope that all the residents of Birch Point Road will come out and find out what's going to happen or ask the questions that they need to have asked so that we can provide answers as time goes by.
And what do we have for answers?
Mostly people are concerned about the timing, the timeline, that kind of thing. We don't have specific plans.
Yeah, I was gonna say. That was pretty mature, but...
People are concerned about what might happen if there is one of those tragic storm surges and the road is out and what kind of emergency plans are in?
Kind of deal with it if it happens.
Right.
Now, I don't know if you know this, but there is a road down there that does kind of cross over to McColl's and it comes out on the other side of that. So there is an emergency escape down there. It's not like they'd ever get stranded down at the point.
Okay, that's good to know.
Is it like a woods road or is it a...
It's a road that the people, families, used to use to go back and forth across. I mean, it's not a power road or nothing like that, but it could be used as a...
In an emergency.
And it connects to Holton, not Holton Park?
No, it connects, you know where the McColl's live down in there? They live on one side.
Yeah.
Uh, Paget, you up in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, but just down and below there, there was a road that had to cross over to the Norton and so we always used to walk through from there.
Oh, okay, yeah.
There was a little, you can take a car through there.
Right.
Okay, I'll get specifics.
Right, so we might want to get together with the landlords down there and ask if we could use that if something did happen. So that might be some good knowledge to get before this meeting also.
Yeah, yeah, good. Or they may get the meeting.
Yeah, it might be a lot of people down there that could volunteer and so... Is the engineering firm sending work up? Look at that.
They have to wait till the snow melts. I talked to Rob Prude, so this is afternoon. So it's on his list.
Now, have we lost any more?
No, I don't think so.
Because this is the time of year we usually lose it, between January to March.
Right.
Because we start getting the Northeasters to come in and...
Right.
...carve it out, so... Last I see it, when I went down on, down below, looking, it looked like there was plenty of rock and stuff. I wasn't just gonna lose it.
Right.
But we want, you know, we needed something that sounded like emergency.
Yeah, and I was down there in the middle last month and it didn't look like, didn't look like there'd been any change. I was not about to climb over the snowbank and look in the little tunnel. Looks like it's stable for right now. Do we have a public comment? All right, on to business items. First on the list, Ms. St. John.
Yay, okay. I have a couple, I went to three, so I don't know. The fees are proposals from Garbage to Garden, which is a company that does composting. They do residential compost pickup in some towns, including Bath. And they have started setting up compost drop stations in rural communities such as Westbach. And this is a proposal to start one here in Westbach, a city for the whole town, just one drop site. And they would provide two 64-gallon containers. So if you go to the end, there's two pictures of what the drop sites look like in Bath. So in addition to residential servicing, they have two drop sites in Bath. One is near the old Armory Building or Bath's skate park. And the other one is at the top of LaMont Street. I just found that one the other day where the community, there's a community garden. LaMont Street is the one that runs between High and Weber, Washington, by the plant homes. So they have one there now as well. So they would do this for $135 a month and residents would be able to come and drop their compost, their benefits to Garbage to Garden's composting system over someone's personal compost system in that they take paper plates, paper cups, bones, things that you might have a hard time composting in your own home compost, like avocado pits, eggshells. They take anything, all paper towels, all Kleenex, all kinds of, all kinds of paper waste products as well. They do not take, well, shellfish shells, but other than that, basically, most things.
Oh, interesting.
So they've recently set one up in Freeport, in Stanbridge. The second one in Bath. And it would be a great way for our community to be more, at least, be more economically minded in our waste stream and provide an opportunity to residents to have less trash going to our transfer station.
Where, where would we put it?
So that's what I wanted to bring here, because I don't know, but there could be, it could be here, up in the parking lot area here or behind here if people didn't like it up front. Or maybe at the fire station in front of the parking lot there. Those were my two ideas, but welcome to any other ideas. The school wasn't excited about the idea because they didn't want people driving in at any point in time that they don't know into the parking lot. That's understandable.
And the school does already compost.
They do, yes, they do.
Yes, which is good to know. Another location possibility could be at the transfer station.
It could be, yes.
So that if folks are bringing in their recyclables or their garbage, it would be a one-stop process.
And they do that in some towns. So gates open all, is it open all the time even when the transfer station's not?
So what happened with the compost, I'm wondering?
So if you're a residential composter with Garbage to Garden, you can request compost back. So it sounded like maybe we could request compost to use either here at the town hall or at the school. But they, they buy that compost from a farm in Gorham that ends up with all of the material.
So you, they actually sell this stuff after the composter or they take it to a farm?
They sell, they sell it commercially. If you're part of their program, you get some in return for your fee.
So if I was, if we were going to do this, people would sign up for it or...
No, if they're just there and you can drop your compost at any time of day or night, whenever you happen to do an errand and drive by. They said, "Start with two 64-gallon containers and see what kind of volume we have and usually picks up over time." And if we ended up needing more containers, then they charge, I think, $45 for another container per month.
So how, if I, if I brought my eggshells, avocado pits and bones, how would I get my little bit of compost back?
I think as a town, you wouldn't. Individually, you wouldn't, yeah.
So the town...
So people who, who have their personal home pickup service pay $15.95 a month. And then they can get their own compost back, but this would be the town sponsoring the...
So then the town would get the compost for the use of the school, the...
Could be the garden, the landscaping.
Or the landscaping here.
Yeah, okay.
Is, is there any town property near the Westbach market? Or is that, I hope that's a private, it's business. I was thinking that would be at least a little bit central. And visible, I like the idea of being visible.
So there's another cost associated, a sign. So you can see in the pictures, there's a sign. They charge $400 for that sign.
Set up one time.
One-time thing. If you want their structure, you can get that. That's $600, but we could possibly find volunteers to construct one or you can simply have two posts. It depends on how aesthetically pleasing you want it. To be another town, I didn't include this picture, but they happened to have a fence where their drop-off station was, so they just bolted the sign to the fence. I think that was standardish, but...
So who keeps the mess cleaned up? We stopped throwing away paper plates, paper cups, paper towels. These cans get overflowed and then...
Raccoons.
Raccoons and other things, then we got a mess.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I can ask Jamie at Garbage to Garden. In Bath, I've been using that drop site for a couple of years and I've never seen debris around. At Halloween once, I saw a couple of pumpkins around it, but I've never seen food waste littered around.
They're tops.
Yeah, they have tops, yeah.
Yeah.
They're big, heavy.
I've just noticed in the past when you open up something like that, the public, and it starts to get full and they bring it down, they're gonna dump it no matter what.
Right.
They've already made that trip. So whether that can come and get secured back down, that's, that's not a clean environment.
So they come weekly? So it's not a long time between? And I'm sure if it was at, if it was here and it was, you know, I drive by here every day, if I saw it full, you could, I could call Garbage to Garden and say, "Hey, we need an emergency pickup or we need a third container because we're, we're filling it up."
At, at the town that spends...
The third container, that was right.
Yes.
Well, obviously, this would have to go through the budgeting process. It's an interesting concept. I, I don't think it's something you can take any action on tonight.
Do they speculate population-wise, percentage-wise, how many people might take part in this?
Yeah, so Jamie said that to start, it's, it's slow to start, but getting the word out through the school or email lists or, it starts to pick up. So in Bath, for example, in one year, I think they saved 15 tons of food waste. And they weigh it and measure how much they pick up. And so you can check in at any point in time and see, "Oh, Westbach, the city saved a ton of food waste from the transfer station." You can use that to try and get people...
But they don't have a scale that shows percentage-wise what it might be?
For a town of our size.
Yeah, 2,000 people?
Not that I know of. And some people do compost at home and say, "I just want to do that." But with education, you can say, "Well, you can also compost all these other things, but they're hard to do at home if you want."
Well, if the town did it, you know, we got, the town gets some compost in return because the school has a greenhouse now, right? But the school doesn't, or that's why I went down. You know if they had, if they needed more compost?
Well, the school was interested in adding some, in participating in some way. And I don't know what that would look like because there's a lot of material that they cannot compost at the school, such as all their paper towel waste. I work in a school and we compost all of our paper towels in the bathrooms. We don't have trash cans, which is paper towel containers. And from their cafeteria, there's a lot of food that they currently don't compost, which they said they might be interested in.
What do we pay per ton for the landfill?
I don't know, half a ton might be...
You don't?
Because ultimately, we're saving money.
Well, I would agree with you.
May not be even, don't, I don't, I'm just curious.
It has to have many eco-compost, I see what your question is, yeah. We have to talk about some numbers.
See, we pay per, per ton.
Yeah, we're saving money.
It's in the, I know it's in the contract, but I can't remember what it was.
I can't remember. I'm thinking, I'm thinking $900 for some reason.
No, nothing.
That seems a ridiculous number.
It seems a little high. Probably not like, probably more like 30, 40.
I can get it there for 75, so I hope we're not paying...
We must be paying $900 a ton for something else.
But that'd be, we'd never find out.
Does anybody have any more questions? So there, would we ever contact Jamie or turn to if there's questions, specific questions, I can reach out to him or anyone else can as well. It'd be a great way for our Westbach to be a little more environmentally focused.
It's a very interesting concept. And thank you for the presentation.
I think the best place for something like that would be the transfer station. Just because we already got the clutter and, you know, maybe after what they already said, a lot of people thought that sandpaper noise would be...
Well, didn't they try it at the transfer station? Transfer station did have compost.
Yeah, so some of this mysterious Agrocycle come, I've been trying Pine Tree, well, I think it came out for a few years. And mysteriously, one day, Agrocycle showed up with some bins and they did it for two weeks and then pulled them. So I don't know, and they just said, "Oh, we didn't end up getting..." So it was a separate company called Agrocycle. And Chris at the transfer station said he didn't really know when it was coming, why it was pulled, what happened. And then there was a particular person who continued to take the compost that people were bringing, but he was using it in his own farm and couldn't take a lot of the items that had been advertised for Agrocycle, so it was...
Yeah, because unfortunately, the fire station is no room there to do the fire station. Very little parking in it.
So if you, if you drive by, if you're in Bath, take a little drive-by, the Armory one, you can see it's like in a tiny little nook. It doesn't need to be big.
And how many cans does the city of Bath use?
I think they have six at that one, but you can count them. That was from the fall, that picture in the back, but they have quite a few.
Do you want to pick that stall?
And they have two drop, two, two bins at the LaMont Street location. And they, they will provide a flyer with the information that we can then, you know, probably electronically send out because it's cheaper, but we can find other ways of getting the word out too.
Okay, and we also discussed that our recycling committee would be interested in taking it one step further. Maybe, perhaps, inexpensive buckets could be provided to citizens. We could tie in the, the information that may be on the sign that we just mentioned, that kind of thing. So I, I've seen this actually work out at a farm out in Brunswick called Crystal Spring Farm. The, the customer can bring a bucket in with, with your eggshells and, you know, your bones and whatever it might be, hand it over to the farmer, and then the farmer then gives us a clean bucket to take back for the next week or, you know, three days or five days or whatever you choose to do. So the, the customer always has a clean bucket, like a cutletop, to take home. And that's not a huge output in expense. And it makes it, it encourages people to do, apparently. And the farmer's been pleased with the reaction there. But once again, it does take time. It takes time for people to begin to get excited about this process. Okay, thank you. I think we'll move on to business item two. Central Maine Power Company, personal property activity. Why don't you go?
Thank you.
Yes. The man that I told him.
I have to give you copies of the comparisons from 17th, 18th.
I think so.
So what's the, um... What is your position on this one?
Well, my position is, what it was is, if you notice, we, you know, they had more personal property with Central Maine than last year. We did this year a lot more, but apparently what they did, that they did was they took most of the Western Party property and put it into real estate. And left out a lot of it that they had last year. So it's quite confusing what they were trying to do. CMD, excuse me, did that, Central Maine. And so I was, you know, a little, a little, I mean, sherry Irish call me, "You had known, I want one." She was the Central Maine, "I want one." And said, "We sent you a valuation of $13,622 in personal property." And not, I mean, $526,387. So then I went and backed through it and backed through the bills, backed through the two accounts or three accounts of that substation. Actually, the lines went up, the substation went up. We did a lot of work on the substation, so those figures kept changing last year. And they're gonna do more work up there on the power lines this year. But apparently, the, you know, it's something that I felt they shouldn't have done. They shouldn't have...
They, they tran, they reported differently this, reported differently this year?
Yeah, yeah.
And why did they, did they say why they did that?
No, they didn't. I still have the email, I think, on my computer up there, which she sent me. That's, that's all she sent me, was saying that, that we sent you a statement on, on the personal property and it was $13,612. And so that drew my attention right away. And after going back through 17ths and 18ths, they tried to pick up what, what they had done. And that's when they come to the conclusion, conclusion that they put it in the real estate. Along with some of the new stuff as well. Is, is the rate, the rate's the same, right, personal property? Yeah, the personal property rate basically would be the same. I mean, personal property goes down every year. While, while the real estate goes down much slower. It's on appreciation. Yeah, of course, appreciation on it. Thing is, these, these numbers aren't arbitrary. They're audited, and they come off in the annual report. And they're not, they can't be inconsistent with that annual report. So what I'm kind of pondering over is no matter how they choose to report the number, numbers, it all eventually adds up to what it's supposed to be. I'm certainly confident that's correct. Yeah, that is. Yeah, what, what they say is accurate. Yeah.
So why is it so different? Just because I really don't know. From 2018 to 2017 under landline valuation section, why are those totals so different?
Landline, they've, they've added a lot to the substation. Substation 747, they've added to that.
They did do some major upgrades down there. They did a job for personal property debt for this.
So the land value went from 62.7 to 2.26, 2.25 or something?
No, not land. What, what they do, it's a special...
Well, that's what you got it listed on.
No, no, it's a special thing with Central Maine. You can take the poles and the, and the land and, and value it as real estate. And the substation is a separate issue, which, like, like Stevie says, they've, they've added quite a lot to it. They're gonna be adding more because they bought enough piece of land down there. And that's, that's how it's always been done. And then the personal property has always had a big account itself in what I felt was personal property. You know, what else hard to say, figure out what's personal property. And then all of a sudden, you know, it, this is ludicrous. They, they sent a valuation of $13,612 in personal property and they were being assessed for over a million, not yet.
I think what they did was we got one piece of paper out of order between the two parts, and that's the issue.
That could be, that could be.
Did we raise for anything?
For what?
Here we've got 2.26 and here, but if you look at it, it's one piece of paper out of order. It's what we both had.
Oh, that, that's possible, yeah.
That's why I couldn't make sense of it.
So what's your recommendation? I, I guess, you know, it's covered, we covered it, obviously. Again, you know, I talked to the guy that I, I went to the caucus last year in the Gasker, and I talked to the guy I claimed to do my job, Moenan. He said he, he thought I had a lot of problems in Central Maine, particularly. The year before, I went around with, with the guy that they hired to reduce Central Maine for a day. He came up with a tremendous smaller bag than they had. So he paid it last year. But apparently, what he's stating is they would pay it this year. They said it was overvalued. And a lot of things have changed. He's saying, you know, what they, they stated two had changed, like indicated to me that they had taken some of the personal property but into the real estate.
So we're saying the discrepancy is between $13,612 and $1.25? It's a huge discrepancy.
Yes, it is a huge discrepancy, a huge discrepancy. And usually what they, what they, they also are supposed to, they can or not use them on a double penny, you know, they're supposed to put in, in their disclosure that they no longer have it for that piece of property. They hidden on three items in there anyway, so I tied some bar it in because they've never disclosed it. They got rid of, it was so much different from what they had. The items just didn't need to show up.
I would just get that part, doesn't make sense.
No, it makes sense to me, you know. But they, that's what they seem to have done. I think they went through it, went through it. It seems to be what they did. They, they turned around and put it along with the power lines, the poles and the meters and everything down in the state.
What's the abatement, you know, dollar-wise?
It's quite heavy.
Oh, what is it?
Quite heavy.
Was it $16,000 or what?
$16,000, yes.
So that's for this year or?
That's for this year.
And what was it last year?
Well, we didn't debate last year, I don't think. No, I, I accepted what they had last year. And what they, what they did, they called me afterwards and just before we went to commitment. And they said, "Oh, by the way, we made a mistake and the lines, certain type of lines that they had..." of lines that they had in that law, they were, they got a valuable, like, million dollars up there or something." And then, because now they're, they're buying the land and they're, they're making the power line a lot wider now. So they're putting in better equipment. But that's what they said, they apologized for it, so...
Has anybody talked to, or they must have done similar things at other towns, right?
Yeah, the only other town I think is, is Bowdenham, one I talked to, the ancestor up there.
So what did they do?
I don't know. He, he, it was still up in the air at the time, what they were gonna do with it.
Do we know it's just Bowdenham, or you only talked to Bowdenham?
Well, it's the one I talked to, because he happened to be there, and he took that class in Agus.
Did we talk with, check with the state of Maine? They must have some guidelines on this.
Could, um, my, my contact, I'll be, was Sherry Irish.
No, I mean the state of Maine.
Yeah, the state of Maine.
The PUC must have something to say about this.
Uh, the Department of Revenue Service.
Oh, the, oh, the PUC.
Yeah, the PUC.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't quite understand how you can decide one year that personal property is real estate.
No, I don't either.
But from thirteen thousand to one point five million difference?
Yeah.
It's not even close.
Yeah. That's, that gets crazy.
I, I'm kind of thinking we should table this, get some better answers for how this was done, what their thinking was, and...
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Because it's just seems bizarre.
Yeah, and, well, Central Maine probably has some other stuff cooked and ruined, too.
Well, I think that we should help them out, give them some more things to pick up. I don't think checking with another town, I'm sure it's not just Bowdenham and West Bath. I'm sure there's a huge, bigger issue.
I'm sure that I've checked those two towns. All the towns.
Right.
I think so, they need to do some, they have homework, research on it.
Yeah. Questions? There are way more questions than answers at this point.
Yeah. Well, obviously, I can see Darren up there, and Bowdenham up there. Oh, so you're thinking this and they, they... They were right on the same channel. They, they do business in? They were, I swear, that case, no way.
And they, they haven't gone to Justin West Bath, they're doing it every town.
Every town.
Every lines. Maybe they have a real bunch of money to spend on last one.
Great coastal town? Let's table it. Let's table it.
Okay, I have an option. Can I have a motion? Say a motion?
I move that we table the Central Maine power issue.
One second. Any further discussion? All in favor of taking? Would you like it on the next agenda?
No, let's Central Maine power approach us.
Okay.
Yeah. If they're, if they're paying what they want.
Can I ask a quick question about, like, sure, about?
Well, you can ask a question, I don't know if we're gonna give you an answer.
Now, personal property tax you charge in CMT, okay?
Yeah.
So what about the pipeline that runs through here and the water district pipeline and... Oh, is that one, do they pay it?
Water district is exempt.
It's exempt.
Yeah. The, the gas line was, it, it, they, they come in in personal property, uh, for the gas line, because they wanted the, the depreciation. And after a year, it was starting to depreciate so quick, uh, I called some other assessors of Mainland, it's outfall on that. And he says, "No," he says, "I'll, I'll take them right back to, uh, real estate." He says, "You can do it." In that way that they don't get the depreciation that they want.
So what about cable, Comcast, and all that stuff?
Yeah, they, they all have, uh...
So we, we charge them all personal property tax?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Okay. And right now, they pay us a fee, which they're trying to get out of.
Most of the personal property, they...
Thirty-five thousand.
No, no, I mean, these companies are going down to cut it.
Well, that's what I'm seeing, because I know, so is the water district, and so it is, you know. They're, they're, they're paying us out. That's, I just want to...
Yeah. No, we do, we give them personal property, but...
I think there's some checking with the state, and we can see if they...
Yeah, I can, I can make some calls and see what I can do, what I can find out.
There might be some, like, the class actions, who, if they're doing this to every town, so that no one town has to stand up against them all.
Yeah. Right. I, I don't know why they would do this in the first place. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them post down what they have and tell us why, for what reason they want, how much money from CMT.
But it might would be worthwhile for you, just to know what other towns are doing, if they're doing the same thing, which they probably are. Just to have a little more information.
Right.
Yeah, but I'm not interested in doing any heavy lifting for CMT.
No, no. But just for our own benefit.
No, it's just power, so if you've got the knowledge, they can't commit it.
Yeah.
They don't like it, they go to Sweden.
There's Spanish.
Spanish.
Well, that's what I'll do then, I'll see if I can, uh, get a few people, maybe, I don't know, CMT themselves, but a few other people.
Somebody at the Department of Revenue, I don't know, something.
Yeah, 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 or something. But I got an idea this has happened to a lot of towns.
Ah, yeah?
He brought that follow to me before, uh, I even got the letter from her, so...
And if everybody says okay, then they just go away. Yeah.
Yeah, but they, they send a disclosure in what they got, and that's it. And most of the time, where they're big and powerful, nobody wants to pull it.
You know, break it down on your own, like, well, it...
But Bowdenham did, because they, "I just gotta do it." And it's my understanding, nothing they did last year, but they, I said, "No."
Well, they, they want to run some lines across that land, so maybe they'd better invest. Okay. So that's tabled. Next on the agenda, the win against Alwys Commission appointment. We have, um, a nomination for John Travis to serve on the Alwys Commission.
I, who, we point Mr. Travis through on that here.
And we know that he wants to do that? He has accepted the appointment. I will accept it. Any discussion? Just to say thank you. All in favor? And the papers being signed as we speak. And item four, the Portland Trust Company's account agreement.
We are updating the agreement just to include current staff.
Yes.
We have the treasurer, the town administrator, and the select board chair as people who are able to contact them and make changes on the account. The only other thing that we tweaked is to have communications go through the treasurer and correspondence to be sent to both the treasurer and the town administrator.
So... That makes, that makes sense.
There are places for everybody involved to sign, and we have two copies to sign.
And I presume that by signing these, it indicates that we are in agreement with those changes?
I guess.
Well, would, would, do you want a motion?
Might as well. Might as well make a motion.
Well, I could do so.
I move that we, um, accept the amendment to the, the, uh, policy for the investment committees.
Does that get that motion? Any further discussion? Then all in favor? All right. Thank you. Uh, this is item five, pending property tax foreclosures. These would be effective on the twenty-eighth.
This is just to advise you, people who have not paid to date. The treasurer believes that a few people will be in to make way on their real estate tax payments by the twenty-eighth, which is Thursday.
Right.
She's expecting to see someone pay on accounts number five ninety-nine and four oh six. Okay. Accounts number fourteen fifty-seven through fourteen sixty-five have, um, essentially said that they're not interested in redeeming the property. So those would probably be available to dispose of.
Yeah.
At some point, you might want to start thinking about how you would like to do that. Yeah.
Christine, you're on property account number nine, six, six. You're aware of the background of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
The paperwork on that particular account is not currently at the town office, so we probably don't have a clean, um, record of foreclosing on that parcel. So what that means is, we'll probably have to leave it on the books for another year.
I'm, uh, my understanding is, we were waiting, and now that we've come to fiscal year, and now we can, well, well...
Yeah, I'll let Julie make that recommendation. She's not ready to put it out there yet.
Okay.
Um, but we'll go over the paperwork together and see if it makes sense to dispose of it together, if we should wait and go through a complete cycle.
So with those first three points property?
Additional. Recopy of the map.
Mr. Nine, six, six, offers to...
These three parcels...
Which he has in the past.
Are the first three accounts.
Most of them have three parcels.
And then this other additional parcel is account number six ninety. And she won't be redeeming either. So we have these four parcels that Julie feels comfortable disposing of. And it might make sense to notify the abutters that those parcels would be available at some point.
Hold on, I'm running Kathleen Rogers.
What's the bio?
There, um, the backside of what we used to call Byron's bucket. Do you know, see that?
Between Bath and, West Bath, Lily Pond and that area?
Way in the back of the...
Down T and R.
Yeah.
There's probably no access to...
So the end of Lily Pond, pretty much.
There's part of the access to almost grows right away.
Right.
Yeah, it's pretty right.
Yeah, Julie considers a landlot.
Yeah.
The state will tell you there's no such state.
Right.
Well, the procedure you go through, it'll help her open it up.
Well, one of the others might want to pick them up?
Yeah, right. Bosses.
So no action necessary tonight, which is to let you know...
Thank you.
That those will be coming up.
Good information to have.
Yes. And the other account that might be of interest is account number, um, seven eighty-four, which you might consider waiting for closure on?
Yes. I think that's been dealt with before.
That, that part continues to be payments periodically?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that was the deal.
Okay. Are we ready for six? All right. The twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, the preliminary review. Just looking for some feedback from the board, since this is my first year, and the process is very different from what I'm used to. So I'm wondering if you have any, any particular items that you would like included in the budget that David and I can make sure that we talk about at some point? Like, for example, particular things that you want to do with this building, maintenance wise? Or if you want to possibly take care of the water filter during this budget year, that's been mentioned, too? Those kinds of items?
Yes.
Because we did award a bid for painting last year that did not get done.
Never happened, right.
So...
So that should be...
It would probably make sense to put it out to bid again, and I'm wondering if, what additional specifications might be included in that?
Then it'd be done.
Yeah. Then it'd be done, and, um, if there's some maintenance to the building, it should be done at the same time.
Yeah, I think there is.
Kind of painting. The outside.
Outside and trail.
Well, there's, there's definitely some rot on some of the trail and around windows out front.
Yeah.
It's gonna take some thick paint.
You want to let, Stevie, you want to let that hurt? That, like, the water filter system...
Yeah.
This year is coming close budget wise. If, if the money's in the current budget, whether it's the ten thousand overlay money, so-called overspend money, or contingency fund, it might be worthwhile if you've done this current budget, if the money is still there.
We can, because the water is awful.
Well, yeah, you've got the money to do it, in the current budget. And there is a building, a building account, the building repairs, too. It's like ten thousand dollars in that account.
Well, when the new town administrator was changing offices upstairs to make the workflow better, um, I did notice that the interior paint is looking really kind of sad. They put up new posters and stuff to cover it up, but when was the last time the interior was painted?
Well, the outside is more important, because that protects the building insight. Don't worry about it.
Well, I'm worried about it. Because we want to have pleasant working conditions.
I did it probably...
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years ago, yeah. It had been done, and the building was built.
Which was when?
Eighty-eight.
Yeah. And then I did it, and then Gerald Small did it after that.
So when was the last time?
Probably ten years ago.
I would opt to make sure the outside is done first.
Okay.
Keep the weather out. And a little bit of blowing in by the head.
Yeah, I'm wondering how these issues are going to be taken care of. Will they be taken care of when we redo the lighting? Or when will that happen? How will that happen?
Probably, probably the, the most expedient thing to do in the long run is to take the whole seal out, put it in the land, because that is sagged, caused by ambient moisture. And this material, it's not asbestos, but it's close. It absorbs water like a sponge, it has no business being in the basement. But they use it all the time, so that'd be my recommendation. You're not, um, you're better off to replace the, the entire ceiling, because you're not gonna match it.
Yeah.
And it's happening here, probably in a couple of years it will be happening here.
It's been this way for fifteen years.
As the water comes trickling down.
But that's what, that's what causes the, the ambient moisture down here on the, this is a... But that's what, that's what causes the, the ambient moisture down here in the, this is a cellar, cement floor.
So do we have any projects that need to be done at the school? Or should I even ask them?
We haven't heard yet, probably in that budget. Probably in that budget.
We haven't, when will we hear something?
They have a first meeting next week or something, or two weeks?
Yeah, I think so.
So it'll be, it'll be three weeks, four weeks, we'll get a official...
Yeah.
But if we have money in the current budget to fix some of these items by the end of June, I'd say it'd be a good idea to do it out of that, this current...
What happened to the painting? Did I just show it or just have to show it?
He was too late and then the weather became not conducive.
Yeah.
So he wasn't able to fit it into his schedule.
In his defense, there were some unforeseen medical issues that came up, which slowed him down, but yeah.
And it's just as well, because we do have other issues that we should be...
Before we pay, if we fix the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
The door we opened here, the windows.
Yeah. Do we have, do we have estimates for those?
Well, I'm wondering, we have what he was awarded, the contract that was awarded for just the painting.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have other estimates.
No, I don't believe it was put out to bid. I think it was just a conversation that was had. Not gonna read the DDA.
Yeah, that could be, but...
I think we didn't get bids too. Yeah, that might be, we didn't give any bids.
We're not to bid and we didn't get any.
And the person that got the bid is a West Bath resident. He came in and I mentioned it to Adam and Adam talked to him, so I think that's how it came about.
And not knowing the process in West Bath, I'm wondering how the bid process is generated. Does it originate from the selectmen? When do you decide and how is that decided? Same with the lawn mowing contract, which expires this year. So I'm just kind of wondering about timing with those types of things.
Well, we have generally approved those. And mostly because it's been timed, the time is, the time is up.
Does it just automatically happen?
You gotta put it up to bid.
Oh, right, but what I'm asking is since I don't have the authority buying the town, how does it happen?
Yeah, you bring it up to them.
Yeah, selectmen decide to put something out to bid and, um, we can, well, we can be published by before Friday if we want to be, you know? So it's really not a, doesn't have to be a long drawn out process, it can happen rather quickly.
So I just need direction to do that, I need to know when to do that.
Do we want, do we want to get estimates on what the job should cost before we... Well, I think he means to know what you want estimates for, what he might asking to be done.
You usually write up, get a job description and then you put it off the bid so people know what they're doing. And then they go and...
Probably somebody comes around to look, uh, somebody from, uh, somebody that go around with it. Make sure all the rod areas are identified and that kind of thing.
Do, do we know what needs to be replaced?
If you hire, just get somebody have a, a concrete look to building. You can shortly see where the rod is. And then you just have an estimate to come look at, have a look at and place it up and an estimate on that job replacing that window sill or that doorway trim, that's right. Which is probably one of the reasons why Ant thought was the pass, because the trim's all right.
Okay.
You put your finger right through it. But I would start with getting somebody to come by and look the building over and give you an estimate what it's going to cost and then put it up to bid.
So wouldn't that be the town administrator's, where she's right here all day?
Oh, yeah, I would definitely do it, but I need direction to do that and I need to know the contract.
So once you put it in the paper, wouldn't they just come in and look and shoot each other in the...
Basically, the contractor would come around and make a list of things that need to be done. Right. Everybody's got to come in and see this whole job different, you've got to have it written out.
The same, the same job.
Right, right. Right. Was that something else would be qualified to do, he's not a contractor?
No, I, Carl's not my local contractor, so...
Anybody can write a description.
Which contractor would you like to contact?
I from... From...
Yeah, he's been around for a while.
He's a taxpayer. On these lawn mowing, I'm sure we have the old...
We have the old, we all have the old contractor.
There's another way you can do it, is have a formula come down, give you that time.
We should talk about that another time.
And tell you're gonna get two on estimates and make sure that everything is...
The same job.
Right.
Yeah, that's really important.
That is, because people, when I'm in cop and, you know, not, not changing trim that should change or he was gonna do something else that didn't get done or...
Right. Don't want to...
That's why you have to, these days you've got to have it written right out.
Froma's a good one to do that, because he does a very descriptive estimate.
And he's also a taxpayer at the town.
Yeah. When I'm in on Wednesday to sign the warrant, let's take a look at the lawn contract.
Okay.
I know there's some things that we weren't happy with, but I don't remember what they...
Right, that was my understanding too, that you wanted to...
That's nothing.
And then tweak it.
If you don't get prescriptions of these jobs, a lot of people say, I'm not even gonna bid on it. But they don't have enough information for me to be the same as the other guy. And that's why sometimes you only get one or two bidders.
Right.
Because they don't know exactly what the bid's on, so they don't even buy it. There's a lot of work out there right now, we'll just...
Yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah, we, we don't need to make it more difficult for people to bid.
Okay. Did you have any other questions, Christine, that you wanted to...
Not in particular, I'm just trying to get a feel for what projects that you're interested in taking care of that you wouldn't, that aren't, you know, carryover from you or... Anything unusual that you might want to make sure is in the budget? So that we can get figures and make sure that we have the information that everybody needs to make a decision.
The, um, the building maintenance is the, probably the most urgent thing that we, we always budget for it, but we don't always have it assigned, because this is what we do.
And keep in mind that it is, you know, money in this current budget, you know, in June.
Right.
The last, the last thing to do for this building for all...
The roof.
Is the roof.
Do we have any other, other?
I do. And I don't know if it falls under, I know it's a sole subject, but I took some pitches. This is the wing found. It's gonna cost us a lot of money if we can't figure out what's, if it's our road or what road.
We were going to meet mid in executive session, can we do that?
This, this is, this is part of the whole town, but this is, it's going to be executive. It's something we need to figure out, if we're gonna get a, if we're gonna have a budget to fix this road or we're gonna, somebody gonna fix it, do we own this road or what's going on that has some significant damage done to this road? And we got catch basins that are filled with silt, we got roads that are busted up and we got oil running down them. We got catch basins that the culverts are high full. I mean, we can't just keep pushing this off and off and off. If we end up getting this dropped in our life, it's gonna cost us thousands of dollars.
This is important to know for the budget process too.
Yes.
So it's something we should be talking about at some point.
Oh, that's...
Steve is, Steve's meeting with the budget committee on the twenty-first, I think.
Sounds right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ahead of that time, we should decide how these items might be budgeted.
Well, we gotta know who we're gonna go with.
Well, what, um, we, this is a research question that we can't deal with tonight.
No, I don't understand that, I'm, uh, two weeks ago we couldn't deal with it, I have to send a, I forget them.
Not so far, but we will. Let's put this on the agenda for the next meeting, okay? And, and the meantime, we'll...
Is there any more research you'd like me to do between now and the next meeting on this? Or you guys gotta do the research and kind of...
I think, I think part of it is, is going back and looking at the sale stuff.
I just think we need to know this before it keeps going on much further. Because right now we're starting to lose our frost. And once we lose our frost and they keep beating these trucks up through there, we're not gonna have a road left. And that's gonna, I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands that we need to do, we could stop it now.
My understanding was that the road would be repaired by, by the company that's putting the stuff up there.
Yeah.
And so what we need to do is ascertain that that's the case.
Okay, because I've heard from other people that's not, that's not so.
Were they party to the sale?
Yeah.
No, we've, we've said at this meeting several times and discussed this and we, we know, we know no more than we did the first time. We said we were gonna look into this, so there is much responsibility. Right. By not looking into finding...
I mean, I hate, they're not budgeting for this and can't, can't, what they're doing, they went all of a sudden and said, we need to, you know? We, we need to know whether they're gonna take care of the mess. That's all we need to know.
So we, we will have as near as possible to the best possible answer on the next meeting.
Okay, and there's one other thing that bothers me, I see they're already building a house, they already put an entrance in there. Nobody coming to see me to get road permits off our roads for this. So we don't know if they put it incorrectly or anything. I mean, they're just doing whatever they want on there.
Where?
Wing found.
They built a house there?
It's, yeah, there's a building there.
Really?
Yeah, really, big one too. And you probably got the highest point in West Bath right now up there where they put dirt piles over two hundred feet high. Took up a whole five meter spot.
Is that the old red now?
Something we have...
It goes in fourth, man, shoot.
Commercial? Yeah?
So...
It's commercial, it's part of the, uh...
Well, it'll be in any case, yeah.
It's, it's a stipulation there, right?
Well, it's, it's part of the, the premium of the government, everybody else, the original wing found.
It's industrial, comes under the, whatever the purview word.
Right, so I don't know nothing about it, but I know that the sewer, the drains they have down there, the silt and stuff that's going in there and it goes in the pump of this, of Bath, we could be buying a new sub top. And we got issued that, there's no silt control at all in the Lows coverage out there.
Okay.
On the stone grates.
Exactly. I mean, I went out, took my time, drew the pitches, I know the last chances I didn't get, but it's like, we got to catch this.
Okay, well, investigate. Thank you.
Yeah, if there's a building or anything out there that's not permitted, then it's a code issue.
The foundation's all in, the walls are up.
That's a code issue.
And there was no, there was no road.
Is that ours?
This was that.
Yeah.
And another one stopped and decided. They're pretty much rather their own little city or whatever they wanted to do up there right now. And if West Bath, West Bath is still a part of it, still owns all the stuff. And decided to get some tax money out of them, can put text on their road or something.
Okay, we, we shall see. Other, other?
Mr. and Mrs. Forney, may we help you with something?
Not at this time. No problem.
Okay.
Thank you for coming to visit.
We must have the, the, the permission to sale agreement on that property, wing found property. And recalling, I didn't see the contract.
It might be worth giving Adam a call to have him give us a rundown of every place where he might find it.
We've got to read, read the contract and see what it says.
Right.
Whatever that says, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. And I think that we should, to spend the money, have a town attorney read the thing over and let us know. If I was like, I'm concerned, who knows what Adam did? He just wanted that piece of land gone and it went.
I'm fairly sure that our attorney is involved.
Well, the attorney, the attorney was involved.
Yeah, the attorney, right, so that's what we should be asking, not Adam.
She should know.
I was, I was present with Adam for the seven hour closing. And we were on the phone to the attorney several times. I don't remember who it is, but, uh...
So do you remember what the road reading was or anything?
I didn't read that.
We'll figure it out. We'll get to the...
No, there, there wasn't an attorney involved, definitely.
Oh, there were lots of attorneys involved. So there's no other, other? Would entertain the motion to, to executive session.
Oh, I would request to enter executive session.
That's the wind, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think I'll run through this one.
Line statutes annotated section four oh five six A.
And I was, and I was second though, no?
People aren't allowed to stake works, why?
It's a special session.
So the session is private.
It's private? So townspeople aren't allowed to know what happens at them or?
Not townspeople.
Confidential.
Personal issues.
Okay.
But no decisions can be made in executive session.
Oh, okay, so it's just like a workshop.
They can't vote.
Exactly, okay.
If they back up, you can vote.
Okay, gotcha.